Good evening. Now, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, School Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome again. Natty, if you would, please read the roll.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Samra?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. First thing up would be the approval of the agenda. If I get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved. Second.
There you go. Lauren and Natty, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Under announcement, September 4th, Tuesday, the district office will be closed for Labor Day. September 12th, at 5:00 PM, there'll be a Subcommittee on Policy. September 12th, at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting here in the community room. September 19th, at 5:00 PM, school board listening session in the family center. Also, September 19th, at 5:30, there'll be a school board work session. And September 26th, which is a Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, a regular school board meeting again here in the community room. Next up, correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there is no correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Anyone here? Okay. Seeing no one, moving forward to the consent agenda. That includes the personnel report. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up is a resolution with the acknowledgement of contributions. If I could get a motion in a second and then I'll read it. Motion to move it forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Hala, thank you. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $1,083.57. And the detailed background is a donation of $8.58 was made to Columbia Heights High School by the Kula Foundation for Student Needs. A donation of $44 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by Target Corporation for Student Needs. A donation of $35 was made to Valley View Elementary by Carissa Gang for Student Needs. A donation of $69.99 was made to Valley View Elementary by Kyle Patric-- Patricia, sorry about that, Kyle, for Student Needs. Following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. Kathy and Randy Kelly, $500. Value and Kind, donation of bike helmets to Valley View Elementary and Columbia Academy by Fridley Columbia Heights Rotary Club for Student Needs, estimated value of $426. Total fiscal year 2017-2018 monetary contributions to date, $1,083.57. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's right. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Natty, if you would, this resolution need a roll call.
All right. Palmer?
Yes.
Mueller?
Aye.
Samra?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is reports from members of the board. Hala, you okay starting tonight?
Sure. Since the last board meeting, I participated in the work session last week.
Okay. Thank you. Natty?
Got a slow week. A little bit of recovery time here for some-- out for some medical things, so I've actually done very little with regards to school board. I'm back on the horse, though, so looking forward to conversations with more people in the community and back to school.
I suspect as the next couple of weeks come up, there'll be plenty of things to report.
Yes. Yes.
Molly?
I attended the work session as well, and that's it.
Okay. Lauren?
Yeah, the same for me. Kind of a calm before the storm. I attended the work session as well.
Laura?
I attended the work session and the listening session.
Okay. Same for me, listening session and the work session, so. And Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair and members, I deferred my report last time, but I do have just a couple of things. One is that I was-- I attended the Minnesota Association of School Administrators Back-to-School Conference with Director Stenwick and Superintendent Intern Tara Takrol, and that's really where we get the focuses on the rules and regulations of how we do it for the upcoming school year. They had a fascinating father-son team, Josh and David Stillman, and they presented on the difference between millennials and Gen Z. And I just want to say that if you're born between 1995 and 2012, there's approximately 72.8 million of them. Some of them are entering the workforce now, and their average attention span is eight seconds. It was fascinating. So, we're going to make some modifications to the workforce and for our classrooms. The admin team, pre-K through 12, had its before-school retreat, and one of the agenda items as it relates to the board is we began our pre-planning for the strategic planning process to bring back to you some things on classroom experience. By this winter, Dennis Cheeseborough was out, and we spent a morning getting ready for that. That was part of our commitment, if you decided to do it, is we do some pre-planning, and so we began that process. Negotiations is still ongoing with Local 710, and I want to say congratulations to Columbia Heights High School for being selected to the U.S. News &amp; World Report 2017 Best High School Rankings. The school was awarded a silver medal, which was one of over approximately 6,000 public high schools nationwide to be selected, and only 10% of all schools selected were awarded a silver medal. And so Columbia Heights High School was ranked 55th out of the 769 schools in the state of Minnesota. So we're very proud of that, and congratulations to the high school. I want to thank individual board members that I met with individually, and then I also went to the work study and attended a school board chair meeting, and I want to thank all of you for your time and input this in the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up would be an information item, 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, Director Stenwick and I are very pleased to be here this evening to present to you information about the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant. Of course, the inspiration for us to apply for this grant is based on our school district's mission of creating worlds of opportunity for every learner. This grant and the work that we hope to do over the next three to seven years involves all of our core values. This is an information item, and we wanted to let you know that Columbia Heights Public Schools has advanced beyond the competitive stage in the application process for the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant through the Minnesota Department of Education, and there are no governance questions.
So what that means is we have had a visit out from staff from the Department of Education. We have been, via email and phone calls, told that we are waiting on some signatures, so we feel that we are 99.99% there, but that's where we're at right now. And so we are proceeding with planning and preparation for what is the return of the Encore program. Very exciting. What does that entail? The Encore program covers an expansion of what we refer to as general out-of-school time programming. So that's before-school, after-school, and includes summer as well, and we're going to be able to focus on grades 1 through 12. Really important is that we're engaging students during this out-of-school time that will complement the during-the-day program. Transportation will be provided home, and snack and food will be provided for students as well. And our main partner, we needed to apply with a partner. We are very pleased that the City of Columbia Heights Recreation Department agreed to partner with us on this grant. We also have contracts, and we'll talk a little bit later, with other local organizations to support the work. So what we're able to do this time around is, we're calling it braid funding, or blend or braid funding. So we have our targeted services funding along with the 21st Century Learning Grant funding, and so we can combine those and provide even more, kind of streamline services for the kids. The grant that was written, we outlined five key areas. So of course, academic support, the arts, technology, health and fitness, and environmental studies. So we're going to go through a little bit of the history of Encore and then some examples of what all these might mean, what could the possibilities be for our students.
Many of you have been with our district through these changes, but we thought that it would still be helpful to have a historical context for what this Encore program is. So from 2007 to '08, that was when after-school programming really began in a robust way in our district, with programming Monday through Thursday with elementary school students plus a homework program on Fridays. And it was a very small program at the middle school. Then, recognizing that that was pretty taxing for staff, we reduced, we dropped the Tuesday classes so that staff meetings could happen after school, but continued with the other programming. 2009, 2010, that was when we began with the 21st Century Grant Cohort 4, and that's when we started with using the term Encore. With five days a week programming, partnering with community organizations, it also provided programming at the middle and high school. And then 2010, '11, '11 and '12, it continued Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday in the district with Fun Fridays, summer camps, and strength and conditioning programming at the high school, and also some, like, Japanese classes and things like that at the high school. 2012, '13, and '13 and '14, we continued with the Encore programming. This was when the dean positions began at the elementary schools, with really a strong emphasis on their leadership in that out-of-school time, and we continued with programming at the high school as well. And then the 2013-14 school year was our last year with the 21st Century Grant. After that, then, we had to narrow what we were able to provide in out-of-school time, drawing just on the funding source of targeted services. And that continued just one day a week at the elementary schools, and it was just for a brief time at the middle school. Then, this past spring, Director Stenwick and I were able to meet with some of the other directors in the district and some of the principals or deans to identify what are the areas that we wanted to focus on in this very competitive application.
We also used student survey data to gather student interest on what they might be interested in doing out-of-school time as well.
Right. And then, in the early summer, we were notified that we had proceeded beyond the competitive stage, and we are-- well, we've already-- they've already asked us to register for the orientation for this Cohort 7, and so we are quite optimistic that this will follow-- that we will be able to follow through on this. And Director Stenwick and I are co-chairing this grant as we implement it throughout our district. Minnesota Department of Education has indicated that this is for sure a three-year grant, possibly additional two more years. MDE might have funding for additional two more years, so this could potentially be a seven-year arc to the programming.
So we want to show some data from the previous Encore programming in Columbia Heights to show why we are so excited about it. In the year 2013-14, we had 1,421 students participating after school, so large participation. As part of the grant, we worked with the Wilder Foundation to gather research and data, and so with our satisfaction surveys, all of the classes came back very positive. We were able to track gains in social and academics. We saw a very clear benefit for students attending the program on a regular basis. And then some other data in graphic form. Here you can see the ethnic breakdown of who participated compared to-- in Encore compared to all of our students, so you can see it mirrored our general student population. And then looking at academic achievement, students who were in the Encore programming from fall to spring had significant gains in reading and math. Now, in Encore, they weren't only taking after-school classes in reading and math. They were taking a variety of academic programming that benefit their reading and math scores, which is really exciting.
And I just want to interject that this data is-- was compiled by Dr. Kristin Dillon with the Wilder Research, and Wilder Research has agreed to partner with us on this grant again.
So let's take a look at some examples of student schedules.
So at the high school, what we've written into this grant is that three days a week before school, there would be an opportunity for some fitness time in the gym. After school on Mondays, a computer explorers is a local firm, and they would offer coding classes. On Tuesdays, another local organization called Spark Y that does really exciting hydroponic, aquaponics, and engineering programming will offer programming at the high school. And then Maya Lemon, our agriculture specialist, will do a Blooming Heights Garden-to-Table Cooking Class. Students have really enjoyed cooking classes, and they've indicated that they'd like to do more of that. And then we'll expand the after-school strength training at the Highlander Center Weight Room. In addition, I want to emphasize that the City of Columbia Heights Recreation Department isn't just a partner. We jointly submitted for this grant. MDE referred to it as a marriage between our district and the rec department. So you will see from what they offer, expanded programming for students from grade 1 through 12. In the summer, there will be recreation programming, as we mentioned, strength training, but we're also partnering with the St. Paul Conservatory for Musical Theater Camp for two weeks at the high school level. Well, we are also going to offer water safety classes, and these will be free during the summer. The water safety classes will be for grades 6 through 12, and two of those weeks will be mixed gender, and two of the weeks will be for females only. And then during the school year, we'll offer water safety classes on Saturdays, two classes, hour and a half each, for free for grades 4 through 8. This grant specifically is for grades 5 through 12, but because of that braiding of funding that Director Stenwick mentioned, we're able to expand what we're offering.
Looking at middle school?
Please.
Okay. So we're able to expand our middle school offerings during the before-school time with AM soccer and AM basketball. As Director Stunkel mentioned, the Saturday water safety classes. Computer explorers, the coding, will also be available for our middle school students. Northern Clay, which, who we've partnered with, we've just been so grateful for their partnership over the last many, many years. They're back with us. Heritage Spanish would be offered as well after school, and then other Encore programming. So when I say other Encore programming, that means that we have these partnerships established with some local firms, but also teachers will be using their creativity and submitting proposals for a class that they may teach one day a week, two or three days a week. So we'd love to tell you all of those exciting classes, but at this time, we're in the proposal stage.
And then during the summer, Spark Y will do an engineering camp for three weeks with middle schoolers. There will be a dance camp, again in collaboration with the St. Paul Conservatory, for one week for middle school students, and then that water safety programming that we mentioned before. At the elementary school level, at Valley View, because they're the first drop-off with the bus, they're able to do programming before school. That's been happening already through targeted services. That will continue. And then we'll be continuing to partner with the Northern Clay Center for Pottery Classes. And here again, we're going now to the three-day-a-week Encore programming. At the elementary and middle school level, we're hoping to have approximately seven classes offered, grades 1 through 5. And then the programming during the summer will really be where you'll see the Recreation Department expanding their offering at the elementary school level, and then, of course, our summer school program.
So here's an example of what a student could take, all the different options that they may have on a Wednesday, and so we are-- we're figuring out the funding behind the scenes, and the idea is that when parents register at the school, they don't need to worry about any of that. They just get to pick the classes and register their students. So here's another example. A student could take, you know, four days a week if they participated in our Saturday water safety classes, and again, the Monday literacy class could be a variety of classes proposed by the teachers.
Some of the collaborating partners, as we've already mentioned, Spark Y, Northern Clay Center, Computer Explorers, the School Garden, St. Paul Conservatory, Wilder Research for the research, and then also working with the University of Minnesota School of Social Work for Quality of Programming Assessments, and then, of course, our jointly submitted partner of the Columbia Heights Recreation Department. We know that out-of-school time is really important for student learning and for student engagement. We saw for many years through our Encore programming that student engagement increased, but also their academics increased. We are so pleased that we can be cautiously optimistic that the letter is going to be sent to us any minute now, signed by MDE, that Columbia Heights Public Schools can yet again have a robust Encore program.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I do have comment. I'm so glad to see this coming back. I remember a lot of the presentations of the data and just, you know, the achievement you could mark up, how many days a week they-- and how much the gains were. I thought that was really significant, so I'd like to see that duplicated again, and a lot of work went into this, so thank you so much.
Yeah. Anecdotally, my kids, if I take them as data, but anecdotally, they're-- even that level of confidence and just having a kinship with the school, being able to do something different in the afternoon with their teacher, and being in the building in a different way was really impactful for them, and just learning to love learning, so, well done.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate to what Laura said, that grant writing is not an easy process, so thank you to everybody who put their time into this effort, because this is truly an amazing experience for our school, and I know that we've-- those of us who've had our children participate have been missing it a lot, and we're just-- thank you for the efforts that you put forth to bring this back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more comment, and everybody did an amazing job of being able to still be able to maintain those targeted services during the time when we didn't have this grant, so I'm grateful that the effort was put there. I imagine that was probably-- that took a little bit of doing as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is the National School Board Association Annual Conference. The NSB Annual Conference is April 7th through the 9th of 2018 in San Antonio, Texas. Per policy, 214 out-of-state travel by school board members. Prior approval of the school board members to attend conferences needed, so the expenditures are already reflected in the current school board budget. So the money's there, but it has to be approved to allow someone to go. And just for-- I think everybody probably knows the history of this, but there was at one point where our budget allowed pretty much anybody to go, and as a board, we just said that that was probably a little excessive, and so we've down to where up to two people can go. And as you all know, we have a rotation that's set up. I don't know if it's in your packets there, but--
Yes.
--usually rotate through that, and for 2018, the members that would need to get back to Dawn, I would assume, and Superintendent Kelly as to whether or not they can go, is Member Palmer and myself, so will be upon approval of the school board. We're going to send two people to that if they're interested in going, so. Any questions on that? It's coming as an information item, it'll come back as an action item next meeting, I would presume. Okay. Any questions on it? Okay. Thanks. Moving along to action items. First up is the long-term facility maintenance. I think Bill, you're up for that one.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I have put in your packet the same spreadsheets that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, when we've talked about our long-term facility maintenance revenue. You see on page 10, you see that we have a 10-year plan for the expenditures that we plan to use on our buildings with these funds. You can see, if you look in the second column bottom, you see that we're planning to spend a little over $1 million this next year. When you look at the next page, page 11, if you look in the second column, the column, the first column that's got the yellow highlights, that's our actual levy that's happening in the current year, but it's based, again, on our number of students that we have. So you can see the second column, when you get to the bottom of the first page, is a tiny bit higher, so you're going to see a small levy adjustment when we get to about a month from now, when we look at our levy for next year. But again, we're getting in about a million, we're spending about $1 million. And in order for us to receive this, or get the authority to levy this, we need you to okay this budget this evening. So all I need is just a motion that you've seen this budget.
Looking for a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Is that Hala?
Yep.
Thank you. Discussion, any questions? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Okay. Now we'll move on to District 916. As you know, in the past, we've talked a lot about health and safety dollars and how the health and safety dollars that flow to District 916. A small portion of that, it goes through our levy, as do all the member districts that belong to District 916. You can see on page 14, the second line is Columbia Heights there, you see that we're looking at $19,612 going to District 916 through our levy for next year. And following that is a resolution that we need the board to act on in order to give the authority to move this money to District 916 for this next fiscal year.
Okay. So I'll be looking for a motion second, and then I'll read the resolution.
So moved.
Is that Lauren? Resolution approving Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District Number 916's long-term facility maintenance budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, State of Minnesota, as follows. The School Board of Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District Number 916 has approved a long-term facility maintenance budget for its facilities for the 2017-18 and the 2018-19 school year in the amount of $326,860. The various components of this program budget are attached as Exhibit A heretofore and are incorporated herein by reference. Said budget is hereby approved. Minnesota Statute Section 133B .53 subdivision 1 as amended provides that if an intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance budget is approved by the school boards of each of the intermediate school districts' member school districts, each member district may include its proportionate share of the cost to the intermediate school district program in its long-term facility maintenance revenue application. The proportionate share of the cost of the intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance program for each school member district to be included in its application shall be determined by utilizing a blended rate, where half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district long-term facility maintenance times the ratio of the member school district's net tax capacity to the total net tax capacity of the intermediate school district, and half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance times the ratio of ADM utilization by district to the total ADM utilization. Well, the inclusion of this proportionate share in the district's long-term facility maintenance revenue application for fiscal year 2018 is hereby approved, subject to approval of Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education. Upon receipt of the proportionate share of long-term facilities maintenance revenue attributable to the intermediate school district program, the district shall promptly pay to the intermediate school district the applicable aid of or levy proceeds. Discussion. Questions? Questions? Hearing none, roll call, if you would please. Natty?
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Samra?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next up, the Metro ECSU Membership Approval.
Chair Larkin? Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here this evening to, with the recommendation for the approval of the membership for the Metro EXU. So again, I was here at the previous school board, school board meeting, presenting information on the Metropolitan Education Cooperative Service Unit. This is a consortium that provides professional development for the district, also student programming, and cooperative purchasing. So based on our participation in last year and the quality of the services, I do feel that it's a great benefit and a good value as well. The recommendation is to approve the continued membership in Metro EXU through payment of $3,678.10 for the 2017-2018 school year.
Motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Second.
Molly? Discussion. Okay. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is the Employee Handbook.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board. I was with you on the evening of August 8th. And at that time, I spoke with you about the changes that were made to the 2017-2018 Employee Handbook. And if you recall, there are minimal changes to the handbook for this school year. Some few changes to vendors that are mentioned and statutes that are referenced. And I mentioned to you, and I will say it again, it may seem procedural in nature, but our district attorney has advised that the school board approves our employee handbook in the event that there's legal action down the road. So I'm here tonight to ask the school board to approve the 2017-2018 Employee Handbook.
Okay. Motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Natty? Discussion or questions? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thanks, Melissa. Last action item is board policies, second reading. Number 303, superintendent selection. 405 Veterans Preference. 414, mandated reporting of child neglect. These policies appeared on the August 8th meeting for review. We're proving, seeking approval this evening. It's kind of a standard question, but have you had any questions or comments come up since it was brought forward?
Mr. Chair, my office has received none.
Looking for a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Discussion. Okay. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is board topics. Anyone have anything for board topics?
Excited to get the new teacher started.
Yep. New teachers tomorrow and convocation next week. When's the first football game?
First football games next Friday night at home, 7:00. Friday, the first.
September 1st, okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting at 7:34.